Our start time, 7:00 PM. I'll start off with roll call. As I look around the table, it looks like everybody is here tonight. I'd like to invite you all to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, next up, we're looking for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next up is the recognition of student, staff, and public. This evening, we have Wold Architects and Engineers. Rod Zivkovich is going to do the introductions here.
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I'm honored to be here tonight to introduce Paul Apikowski. He's a partner with Wold Architects. Wold has been with our district since 2009, when they were involved in our, looking at our usage of our facilities, and also that we were looking at to bring some special ed programs back to the district. They started in having involvement with that, and in 2010-11, we went through a deferred maintenance plan of our district-wide, which the board will be approving, some of our old facility bonds tonight regarding that plan. Paul and his group have been kind of like a team with us rather than a vendor. We've gone through a lot of projects, some that went through, some that did not go through, but I think we've worked together, and it's been a great help to have them with us for the last five years. So, I'd like to introduce Paul Apikowski and thank him for everything that they've done for the district over the years.
Thank you. It's a great honor to work in Bloomington. You're obviously one of the great school districts in the cities, I think. And it's also a great place for me to work, and challenging always. In addition to doing the traditional projects of architect and engineers, you have lots of creative and interesting problems that I love to dive into and try to figure out what to do. And as Rod said, some go and some don't, but I save them all in a binder, so, because they do seem to come back somehow, time after time. On behalf of me and all my team, we'd really like to thank you for the opportunity to be here, and look forward to many years more of it.
Thanks so much, Paul. All right, next, I'm going to ask if there are any of our high school seniors here for their government class. And if so, what I'd like for you to do is to come on up to the same mic that Paul was at, tell us your name, and then your teacher's name. So, give a shout-out to your teacher. Come on up, don't be shy. Some of them knew I was going to ask that, some of them came in a little after, and so, they're surprised.
Hi, my name is Phil Mick, and I, my government teacher is Mr. Starling.
Hi, my name's Jacob Bratton, and my government teacher is also Mr. Starling.
My name is Annie McCray, and my government teacher is also Mr. Starling.
I'm Kyle Porter, and my government teacher is also Mr. Starling.
My name is Milan Miller, and my government teacher is Mr. Starling.
I'm Riley Thon, and my government teacher is also Mr. Starling.
I'm Doug Sherber, and my teacher is also Mr. Starling.
I'm Drake Hill, and my gov teacher is Mr. Starling.
I'm Daniel Tsbon, and my gov teacher is Starling.
All right. Thank you guys all for coming. The requirement is that you, that you attend either a board meeting or city council meeting, a meeting of your elected officials, and hopefully you'll be able to sit here and stay for an hour. And after that time, you're free to go. We do encourage you to stay for the whole meeting. I'm sure you'll find it mutually beneficial. If you need to leave it at 8:00, anyone off to my left or your right can sign your agenda, just to prove that you are here. All right, thanks so much for coming. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the board on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, looking for a motion to approve the Part A agenda. Some of...
Second.
Any questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, we're going to ask you to turn your agenda over to the backside, Part B. First thing on there is the acceptance of the audit report for 2013-2014. Would you like to read this one?
Mr. Chair, be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 accepts the auditors' reports from current winter via limited, which include audited financial statements, audited financial statements of the student activity accounts, and accompanying communication letters for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014.
Second.
All right, moved in second. Rod, what have you got for us?
Chair Bergstrom, Superintendent Fujitaki, board members. I'm here tonight to present the 2013-14 audit report. I have Matt Mayer from KDV, who's a partner from KDV on the project, so he'll be doing the presentation for this evening, so I'll turn it over to Matt.
Thanks, Rod. Mr. Chair, members of the board, superintendent, thanks for the invitation to present tonight. I've got the results of the 2014 audit, as well as some financial analysis to provide for you this evening. Just a reminder to everyone what our role as auditors is. The district has a responsibility each year to prepare financial statements for the public, to present the results of operations and the financial position of the district. Our job as auditors at the end of the year is to come in, to test, examine, give an opinion on those financial statements, so that users of them can be assured of their accuracy. We do that through our independent auditor's report, which you'll find in front of the financial statements. And this year, as in years past, we're providing an unmodified opinion, or a clean opinion, on the district's financial statements. That's the best opinion that we can give you. What it means is the numbers we're going to be looking at tonight are materially accurate. They're a true picture of the district's financial position at the end of the June 30th, 2014 fiscal year, and a true record of the transactions for that same year ended, the revenue coming into the district, the expenditures going out. We also perform two compliance audits this year. The federal government requires that we take a look at your federal spending to ensure that you are spending the grant monies in an appropriate manner. We do that on a rotating basis, covering several grants over the course of a few years. This year, we looked at your special education and your child nutrition programs, and happy to report no findings there. And then finally, we performed a compliance audit in association with Minnesota statutes. The Office of State Auditor requires that, testing you on things like conflicts of interest, contracting and bidding, and again, no findings there. So, I'm offering three reports tonight, one on the financial statements, two on compliance, and all three are the best I can provide you all, unmodified reports. So, an excellent year for the district when it came to the audit. With my remaining time tonight, I want to take a look at the numbers a little bit with you. I know that you're well briefed throughout the year on your financial position, but want to give you maybe an outsider's look at the district's finances, and hopefully that's checking with what you are hearing from administration. And I want to begin that with the budget-to-actual comparison for the general fund. This is kind of a busy chart we're looking at here, but I think the best place to look is the bottom line on each of the columns. As a board, you have policy responsibility to establish the parameters for spending during the year, and ultimately handing that off to administration. So, your responsibility is the first two columns in this chart. Administration has the responsibility to execute that budget, which is represented in the actual amounts for the year. The board did approve deficit spending this year, basically spending down of fund balance or your financial position, and we'll take a look at fund balance a little bit later. But if the bottom line for the original budget was spending down of fund balance by about $4.9 million, and the final budget called for spending down of fund balance by about $5.5 million, again, that's on about $125 million budget or so. Actual results for the year came out better than anticipated. If we look on the revenue on top there, you're going to see revenue was at $126.1 million, about $1.5 million better than anticipated. Most of that in state sources of revenue, the special education, as well as general education coming in better than anticipated. You're going to see some pretty big numbers on the variances there for property taxes and state sources of revenue, and that represents about a $13.5 million payback from the state of what was called the property tax shift. They borrowed money from you about four years ago to help balance their budget, and ultimately repaid those dollars back this year. So, you early recognized levy dollars four years ago, and now they're paying you back with additional state aid in 2014. So, those numbers, you'll notice, pretty much wash each other out, but again, the difference ultimately on the positive side was additional state aid over and above the budgeted amounts. Spending for the year was kept in check quite well. About $125 million was spent on $128 million budget. You're seeing savings there under special education, and also some capital outlay amounts that were deferred for future years. So, in the end, while you had anticipated a decline in fund balance, actually, there was a small surplus for the year, about $1.5 million, a $239,000 increase in total fund balance, and we'll take a look at the components of that in just a little bit. The numbers are ultimately driven by your student count, so knowing where you stand when it comes to student count is critical to your budgeting process and the financial health of the district. And you have seen declines each of the last couple of years, both in resident average daily membership, these are public school students within your district boundaries, whether they attend here or not, about 100 student decline, or 1% from 2013 to 2014, and also in the actual students served, and this is the weighted amount after factoring the impact of open enrollment, and that number was down about 140 students or so for the year, and that was about a 1.2% decline over the prior year. Revenue for the year was about $126 million, as we saw earlier, and that was about a 3% increase, or about a $3.8 million increase from the prior year. You can see the vast majority of revenue in the general fund is the green portion of the bar there, and that represents state sources of revenue. It's about 81% for this year with the payback of the tax shift. In a typical year, that number is closer to about 70% to 75%, and we'll go back to the norm in 2015, all things being equal, if the state's financial position holds going forward. We look at where the spending is occurring, about $125 million worth of spending in 2014, and that's up about 3% or so over the prior year, about $3.5 million. But probably more importantly is where those dollars are being spent, and I think this pie chart shows that well. If we take all of the instructional categories, which represent regular instruction, special education instruction, as well as vocational instruction, they add up to about 68% of your budget. That means 68% is going directly to the classroom for instruction. And actually, I like to include that instructional support category as well, because most of the spending there is classroom or instruction-related, and as a result of adding that, you're almost at 3/4 of your general fund budget going toward instruction in the classroom. District and school administration represents about 5% of your budget, and district support, which are things like finance, legal, human resources, and the like, that's another 5% or so of the budget. The other major categories are pupil support, which is transportation costs, that's about 8%, and then sites building and equipment is your facilities, utilities, and the like, basically keeping the lights on here at the district. I'm going to jump to this chart, and I apologize again for how busy it is, but I think this is probably the best chart to demonstrate the financial health of the district. And if you can see it with me, we can look on top at the numbers we already looked at. Basically, fund balance going up by about $1.5 million or so to about a $33.5 million fund balance to end the 2014 fiscal year. That is a five-year high when it comes to overall fund balance. What I'd like to do is take you down to the bottom portion of the chart, and you're going to see the bottom line there is the same, $33.5 million. And above that, though, are all the various components of fund balance. We have non-spendable amounts on top. Those are amounts where the check has already been cut, and the benefit from that is going to arrive in future years, prepaid expenses, things that are inventory, supplies inventory, things like that, that are part of your financial health, but not something that you have cash for, that you can discretionarily spend in future years. The next category is restricted amounts, and you can see some fairly significant dollars there for things like capital projects and operating capital. I like to call those dollars from the state with strings attached. If you don't spend them for a particular purpose, then the state requires that you spend them next year for that purpose. So, while a part of your financial health and the overall fund balance, they're not dollars you have a lot of control over, because they're earmarked already by the state for some specific uses. And then the next category down is committed amounts, and these are amounts that you, as a board, set aside for particular purposes each year. We've got some capital needs in there, some various operating needs as well that you've set aside. And the one category I want to mention is the operating referendum category, and that's the amount that you've set aside. It's kind of a promise to the taxpayers on how you're going to approach the operating referendum, and how those dollars will ultimately be spent. Amounts in prior years that were unspent were set aside, and this year, you did start to spend that down. You can see, I'm about halfway through the committed categories there. Last year, the operating referendum set aside was about $10 million, and you spent about 2.2 or 2.3 of that in the current fiscal year, and as a result, then that portion of the fund balance went down. Other categories that went up were in the restricted categories, the operating referendum, the capital projects levy. So, all things being equal, your fund balance stayed relatively the same, but the operations portion of the budget went down, or the fund balance went down a little bit, and those restricted amounts that you don't have some control over are the ones that actually went up a little bit. So, that's where the dollars were utilized during the current fiscal year. What's left is unassigned fund balance, and that's the number the state uses to evaluate your health, and that's the number you also use to evaluate your health in relation to your fund balance policy, and that number was relatively stable with just a small uptick from the prior year. But again, the key point here, I think, is that operating referendum, starting to utilize those dollars that had been set aside in prior years. Financial health of the district remains strong. You had a steady fund balance each of the last several years at $33 million. It's been holding steady for three years solid now. But what has changed is the cash balance that the district maintains. The district was basically lending significant dollars to the state through the property tax shift, as well as holdback dollars that the state was keeping. They, in 2012, it was as bad as being paid only about 64 cents on the dollar, the other 36 cents coming after the end of the fiscal year. So, while you had a $33 million fund balance back in 2012, your cash balance was over $20 million less than that because of the state holdback, a big IOU from the state of Minnesota. Now that things are better financially at the state, they're paying you on a 90-10 basis, which is the maximum according to statute, and you're also receiving your property tax settlement from Hennepin County, and being able to recognize that as cash, whereas in the past, the state was holding some of that back from you. And you can see that the cash position actually is a little bit even higher than the fund balance position, because you're receiving that check from Hennepin County that's going to be used for next school year. You had the cash in hand before the actual school year starts. Financial health of the district from a percentage standpoint, fund balance is about 25% at the end of the year. That compares very favorably to other districts across the state. The average school district in the state last year had about a 22% fund balance. And then just to wrap things up tonight, I want to take a quick look at your food service fund. This fund had some challenges this year, and many of them were external. A couple of things on the revenue side. The school year, we had several snow days. I think there was actually five snow days during the year, so the number of meals served was down significantly, and that ultimately is going to affect revenue. On the expenditure side, you see almost an $800,000 increase in spending, and there's some significant new federal mandates regarding the school lunch program that the district is starting to feel. The cost of food is going up as a result of these mandates, and also, it is impacting the revenue side as well, because those students who choose to pay for their lunch, a lot of them are voting with their feet, I guess you could call it, not choosing to purchase meals, and as a result, you're seeing some of the effects on the revenue side as well. As a result, there was this pretty significant deficit in food services this year, about a $659,000 deficit. You had a strong fund balance in that fund, so you're able to absorb that relatively easily. But as you can see, you went from a $1.9 million fund balance down to about a $1.2 million fund balance, just in one year, when it comes to food service activities. And then finally tonight, a quick look at community service. This is the fund that covers your community education, your early child family education. School readiness comes into this. All of the community education programs are in this particular fund. And it's difficult to look at this fund as a conglomeration of them and kind of determine the individual financial health, but I can tell you that each particular aspect of this fund, each of the ECFE fund balance, the school readiness fund balance, community at, we're all positive at the end of the year, and that indicates to me that the charges for services, the levy dollars going into this fund, the state aids that you're receiving, are adequate to cover the operational needs of this fund, and the subsidies are at a relative minimum. You can see the other financing sources is the transfer that comes in from the general fund each year with some levy dollars that you're moving over for facility needs. I think I'll leave it at that. We had some other charts regarding long-term financial health, long-term debt, things like that. So, if you've had questions about those, I'd be happy to answer those, but I think that gives you a good five or 10-minute overview of where you stood financially in the results of our audit. Thanks again for the chance to speak with you tonight.
Great, thank you. Anybody have questions, comments? A lot of interesting numbers. Jim?
Mr. Chair, and Matt, I guess on a tax levy slide that you have there, you know, just a casual understanding or whatever.
Yeah, I'd be happy to brief you on this. The top portion of the chart is the actual dollars that the district has levied each of the last five years. And again, relatively flat amounts from '09 to '11, right around the $42 to $43 million mark, and then a little bit of an uptick in 2012, 2013, where it was about $48 million. Now, there's a lot of components to this, and the first component is the school maintenance, and that's the state-mandated portion of the general education levy. So, that's the dollars that go to your general fund for actual classroom needs. Then there's the referendum amount, and that's the amount that the voters have approved over and above the base funding that the state has established through statute. And then we have special levies for community service, the debt service on the bonds that are paying for the buildings and the facilities here, and then the OPEB is a special bond that you have related to other post-employment benefits, basically issued a debt to cover some of the retiree health benefits that were, that came out in a new accounting standard about five years ago. So, overall, the total level, about $48 million. A good chunk of that, about $37 million, goes directly to the general fund through K through 12 spending, and that's actually a little unusual. I usually see most of the dollars hitting the debt service fund for facilities, but your taxpayers, their dollars are actually going directly to the general fund operations. Those numbers translate into amounts at the bottom, which are tax capacity percentages, and that amount doesn't include the referendum. The referendum is based on the market value of the home, and the other portions of the levy are based on what's called the, blanking out, tax capacity of the, which is kind of an artificial number based on state statute. That number's been relatively stable. That gives the taxpayer kind of an understanding of the burden that you're asking of them when it comes to funding, and you can see that number has been right around 26%, 27% for the last couple of years. And a lot of that has to do with declining market values. As we see those starting to tick up again, and the levy remaining relatively stable, I think you're going to see your tax capacity rate go down in the next couple of years. Do you have some numbers on that?
Thank you. All right, Tom?
Actually, a couple of questions. On the slide 11, we talked about the 68% is going to instruction. Do you have any idea what the metro average or state average is of how much of the money is going to instruction?
Anywhere from 60 to 70 is usually what I see there. I know there was a push several years ago to really strive for something in the high 60 range, up to 70 as well, and I think there was even a request for some sort of mandates on that, but that never came to fruition at the Capitol. But anything in that high 60 range is very solid from what I see.
And also on slide 10, I was looking at that and just comparing from the spending increases from 2010 to 2014. I was looking at some of them, like the, the school administration's gone from 5.2 to about 6.1, and so, about 15%. And then you got instruction has gone from 70 to 85, so like 20%. And actually, the pupil support service has gone down a little bit. And I looked at the district support service, it's gone from 3.8 to 6.1, which is like a 60% increase. Do we have any reason why there was such a large increase in the district support services?
I think it was, in overall, a issue of chargeback between a couple of years. I would imagine that you're going to see within the next year that number being back in the 3.7 range again. It's just more of a timing thing for the current year.
Okay, what kind of a programming's are in the district support?
The district support services are the areas of technology, business services, HR, community relations, those are kind of the main programs in that area.
Okay, so is all that money coming from the general fund for that, or do we have, like, community relations, is that part of, do we have integration dollars for that, or is that all community or?
No, this is all general fund. Would be general fund, title, integration, would be all those different dollars within that area.
Okay. All right, and also, since this is a better-than-we-were-anticipating audit report, then what was the, what were we anticipating the deficit to be?
The best place to look at that is that budget, again, and again, as an outsider looking at, I'm not exactly sure what expectations were, but I would, I would have to say that you, as a board, or the board previous to you, approved this budget. The final amended budget called for about a $5.5 million deficit ultimately. And again, it was on two parts, the revenue projections actually came in better than anticipated, about a million and a half there, and then the spending came in under budget by about 3.6, based on the budget approved by the board. When was the final amended done? Do you do that near year-end?
It was January, January of last year.
So, what does this mean moving forward? I'm sure you know we're in the budget-cutting process that we're going through. What does this mean moving forward for next year? Can we have any projections at all, or not really?
I would probably defer to Rod on that. I think what I can do is provide whether or not the budget that you established was executed as you strategize on how you want to proceed. I think that definitely is a conversation. The original budget is established, and you're receiving information on how you are matching up against that, if you're on track or off track, and then if you feel amendments need to be made during the year, that's certainly a prerogative that the board has.
I would say, to add to that, in the way of the expenditure area, we were thinking that we would have spent more on some of the addition of the classrooms, the kindergarten and that type of involvement last year. A lot of that didn't get spent till after the year, so it rolls into next year's budget. It's kind of, so some of the savings that, that we saw this year will really be floated into next year as more expenditures.
I think that's demonstrated on the capital outlay line, and that number is relative, it spikes and that peaks, there's peaks and valleys to that, and that's the equipment the facility needs, and that's about $1.5 million went unspent this past year in capital, but there obviously, it was a timing whether those projects were done as of the June 30th cutoff or not, and a lot of those projects cross over during the summer months.
Is part of this better-than-expected is because that our enrollment projections this year were off slightly? I mean, I think we were expecting to lose about 90 students between last year and this year, and we lost, I think, 12. So, is that part of the reason why it's better-than-expected?
None of these results are reflected based on our enrollment for 2014-15. These are all 2013-14 aspects.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Jim?
And then just the top line on that same slide, you know, the fact that we had the variance of 13 million was the chargeback, that we got money back, and now we're not going to be getting any money back, so as we budget, you know, we can plan on a regular 30 million, 29 million, or whatever it is that way, so that's a wash.
Like I said, a lot of numbers. Just, any other questions? All right. I appreciate the information as it's presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
And we'll move to vote on this resolution. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Move to the second one on Part B, which is the final 2014 payable, 2015 property tax levy, and that's Rod Zivkovich. Well, stay here and give us the presentation. Who'd like to read this one?
Mr. Chair?
All right, Tom.
Be it resolved, the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the proposed final property tax levy for the 2014 payable, 2015 levy of $49,551,585. Be it further resolved that in the event of any changes to levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is the intent of School Board Independent, the School Board of Independent School District 271 to levy the appropriate amount as allowed by law.
Second.
All right. Rod, what have you got for us?
Well, first of all, I apologize with the original file that was in your board packets. There was a wrong file. It had some extra slides on it. I've made the corrections for this presentation, but I just wanted to make the board aware of it that Deb will update the file after this meeting to have the correct report in So, the overall objective of this presentation is to prepare the school board to make an informed decision on the final levy certification tonight. The need for board actions tonight, we're going to review two things. One is the truth and taxation process, and the other is the proposed final levy for 2015. With this process, at the end of my presentation, I will turn it back over to the board chair if any of the public has any questions at that point in time about the proposed levy. The truth and taxation process starts out that we have submitted a preliminary. The truth and taxation process starts out that we have submitted a preliminary, uh, back in September. That information went to the county. The county provided tax forms to, uh, the taxpayers. We have our truth and taxation hearing tonight. The board will certify the levy tonight, and then after the first of the year, tax bills will be sent out to property tax owners. Back on September ninth, we got our first look at the preliminary numbers. On the twenty-second, the board approved a preliminary levy. On September thirtieth, we provided that levy to, uh, the Minnesota Department of Education, Hennepin County and Scott Counties. Uh, the counties prepared truth and taxation, and tonight will be the certification of those. The first part of the certification is, um, looking at the updated budget or adopted budget last year. Uh, the school district is divided into separate funds. The general fund, um, as you can see, with, includes transportation, technology, uh, levy, and also capital funds, food service, community services, buildings, debt, trust, and then internal services. So, if you look at our adopted budget, uh, we had revenues of a hundred and eighty-six million, expenditures of two hundred and four million, or expenditures over revenues of eighteen million dollars. The general fund is a hundred and thirty million dollars, expenditures of a hundred and forty-two million, or twelve million dollars over. So, based on that, you can see that the, the general fund consisted of twelve million of the eighteen million overall. Sources of those revenues, if you look at overall, um, as we just talked with the audit, our, as our overall district of the hundred and eighty-six, fifty percent is state aid, which includes formula revenue, special ed, and then other revenues. We have property taxes, which includes our referendum, our safe schools levy, our capital projects levy, federal programs, which includes titles, special education and others. We have our fees, and then we have food service, which is broken out, uh, with all of the state, federal and local dollars. If we just look at the general fund, now we get back to more of, uh, sixty-eight percent, which is the state. The state, uh, property tax twenty-six and federal six percent. If we go to expenditures by program, looking at overall, this is a little more broken out than, than Matt provided, but, um, you see that the two hundred and four million dollars consists of the regular instruction, vocational and special ed, and then your instructional support, which is your assistant principals, uh, your media, staff development, your pupil support, which is the health, uh, psychologists, transportation, buildings and grounds, the custodians, utilities, um, our facilities, which is our, uh, or our fiscal, which is our debt. The administration, which is superintendent, assistant principals, and district office, accounting, HR, payroll, technology. If we look at it more from a, just a general fund perspective, you kind of get back to the point where Matt was mentioning before, if you take the forty-four percent, the two percent, and the nineteen percent, you come into that, um, high sixty range, um, as we had in the last year's budget. As we move on to the second part, is the proposed property tax levy. The MDE calculates our preliminary amounts based on statute and information that the district provides. There are five major categories to the levy: referendum, referendum other, or equity, community services, debt services, and other. The school board determines whether, uh, to levy a maximum amount or something less than that maximum amount. So, if we look at a referendum first, uh, this is our operating referendum that was approved by the voters with an inflationary increase. Uh, looking at it in, um, last year, it was eleven million, nine fifty-eight. Uh, it increased to twelve, two sixty-eight with a, about a hundred and, or about a two hundred, uh, hundred and fifty, uh, reduction in, in pupil units. So, if you look at the overall referendum, the referendum's going up, uh, three hundred and ten thousand dollars or two point six percent. The adjustments from prior year, since we do these levies technically two years in advance, if there's enrollment adjustments, if there's inflationary adjustments, those are taken into account in prior year adjustments. That's, uh, nine thousand five hundred and sixty-four. So, the overall total levy for referendum is going up three hundred and seven, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars or two point four percent. If you go to operating, uh, referendum other, um, what is, this is technically called is the equity levy. Um, if you look at the overall with the equity levy, you see that, um, the first three categories here, there's very, um, little difference between. It's kind of a wash between the board adjusted, the local equity, and the, um, equity revenue. And then you see, again, prior year adjustment is the larger increase here to netting out to be just under a hundred and fifty thousand dollar adjustment or one point five, or one point seven percent. Our next area is community services. The community services, really no overall change between the two. A small increase in the normal revenue and a small adjustment increase. Debt service, um, is showing that we're going up one point six million dollars. Part of that was, is the board in the last, um, time we levied, we refunded some bonds at that point in time, which we took the savings of those refunds in the first year, which was two thousand, uh, paid two thousand fourteen. Um, the, the next set of bonds is coming in here at the one point five additional. As you'll see from our levy other category, there's kind of an offset with those two categories to balance them out. If you go to referendum other, um, this is our capital projects levy, our operating capital, um, our safe schools, our integration, our, um, Q comp, um, that's showing that that's going down, uh, one point, uh, almost one point one million dollars. So, if we look at our overall, um, as I mentioned, referendum's going up by three hundred. Referendum others going up a hundred and fifty, really no change in community. Debt service is going up, pretty much offset by other. So, the overall is going up eight hundred and sixty thou, thousand dollars or one point eight percent. When we went out for our referendum last year, uh, for capital projects levy, we made the promise to voters that we would make sure that our non-operational levies would stay flat, um, at least through the length of time that the current, uh, capital projects levy was in place, which is the seventeen, eighteen school year. Um, so, you can see with the allocations here, uh, we are keeping that promise, uh, with that amount. You can see that the, the majority of the, or at least half the increase is at the hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is inflationary increase of the operating referendum and prior year adjustments. And then the other, the big increase in the other area is that, um, we had, uh, additional lease levy for our additional space over at the community at campus for BTC and also, um, for, uh, career and college academy. So, if you look at it as an overall, as we do a comparison, we work with the city and the county to come up with the impact on a, uh, median-sized home each year. You look at a median-sized home back in two thousand fourteen, was a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. It's now two hundred and, uh, s, almost two hundred and seven thousand, a ten point one percent increase. Uh, property taxes went from twenty-seven nineteen to twenty-eight sixty-five, or a five point four percent increase. And the school portion went up forty-two dollars or four point nine percent. The overall percentage increases that each of the different municipalities did was the city was doing a four percent increase, the county a two point seven five, and as you saw on the previous page, the, the school district a one point eight percent. So, at this point in time, we'll turn it back over to the board chair, uh, to ask for any public comment.
All right. Do we have any members in the, in our audience here that would care to comment on this, uh, presentation? All right, I'll turn the questions and comments over to the board. Any, any comments on this rather comprehensive presentation? Again, a lot of math, a lot of numbers. Um, I just, I had one, and I'm, I think it might just have been a typo. It was on the slide before this. Uh, the first column says paid twenty-fourteen. The next one says paid twenty-fourteen. Is it twenty-thirteen in the first one?
It should be twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen.
Twenty-fourteen and fifteen, okay.
I apologize for that.
That's all right. I just wanna make sure I got my numbers right. Cause I don't wanna pay two different things on my property taxes in the same year. All right. Yeah, Rick?
I just want a clarification. I had asked a few months ago and received a response. I just want clarification, um, that, uh, could be, yeah, where we say that if the property value went up by ten percent, then the taxes would go up, you know, with the corresponding amount. However, if we looked at that in terms of if the property actually had stayed the same value, uh, we'd said that your taxes would actually go down.
Correct.
Okay. So, so really, in this case, the, for most, for most people, their taxes will increase, but at a lower rate than what the property value's increasing, and that's sort of a normal thing that happens.
When, when there is growth in property value and the, the municipalities levy less than what the growth is, yes, that is the case, that they would be. Um, the opposite effect could happen too, is if, when, as we were seeing in prior years, as the property values go down, they would see even a larger impact than what the municipalities were increasing their property taxes.
All right. So, I just, I just wanted to make sure that I was cl, clear in understanding that correctly.
Jim?
I just have another question too. So, in that first column on there, what you say, the taxes we paid in twenty-fourteen in May and October was the twenty-seven nineteen number. The taxes we will pay in twenty-fifteen will be the twenty-eight sixty-five number. Now, when we, that's what we will be, you know, homeowners will have. Now, when we talk about the budget twenty-fourteen and twenty-fifteen school year, this is all separate and excluded from that. When we talk about the budget for the twenty-fifteen, sixteen school year, we're gonna have the reducing sizes. So, I mean, there's a, it's, sometimes it's confusing to see this at the same time we're talking about the school budget, because they're two different fiscal time periods.
Well, technically, this is the first thing you do for the next year's budget. The pay fifteen, which should be fifteen, um, levy is your levy for your fifteen, sixteen budget. So, this is the first to start the ball rolling down the budget of what we're gonna levy, so we know what revenue or what revenue we should anticipate by operating referendums, by capital projects levies and, and other areas.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Tom?
So, just, does this cover just, uh, voter-approved levies? Or just also board-authorized levies as well?
This is all.
Just all of them combined together?
Okay.
All right. Any further questions before we go to vote? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now, number three on our part B is the resolution ratifying the award of the sale of general obligation school building bonds series twenty-fourteen A to refund general obligation school building bonds two thousand six A. And Rod is gonna have that one. Who'd like to read that?
Mr. Chairman?
Jim?
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District number two seventy-one approved the attached resolution ratifying the award of the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery and registration, and providing for the payment of forty-five million, four hundred and seventy thousand dollar general obligation school building bonds series twenty-fourteen A to refund general obligation school building bonds two thousand oh six A.
Second.
All right. All right, Rod, what can you tell us on this one?
This was brought to the board at our last board meeting regarding the authorization to, uh, move down the road to sell these bonds. We will be selling the bonds, uh, hopefully on Wednesday, um, where, uh, meeting the parameters that are put in place. Um, Ellers and Associates will notify myself, and myself and the board chair will sign off on the final, um, approval of this bond resolution.
Any, any questions, comments? You said hopefully Wednesday. Is there a possibility it'd be before or after?
No, I, it'll be Wednesday. It's just making sure that hopefully the market stays at our parameters, which I'm very comfortable it will.
All right. Well, you know where to find me to sign that document, so. Any questions before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next one up is number four, resolution ratifying the award of the sale of general obligation bond series twenty-fourteen B to finance alternative facility projects. And Rod has that one.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Maureen.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District two seventy-one approves the attached resolution ratifying the award of the sale, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery and registration, and providing for the payment of twenty-five million, nine hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, general obligation bonds twenty-fourteen B to finance alternative facilities projects.
Second.
All right, Tom got that one. Rod, what do we have here on this one?
This is the second one that actually came to the board, uh, last time also. This is to pay for our all facility projects for the next two years. So, for financial years two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and two thousand sixteen, seventeen, um, they'll be used, this twenty-five million dollars will be used in a combination with our pay-as-you-go levy, uh, to meet the, the board-approved fifteen million dollars a year of deferred maintenance projects.
All right. Any questions, comments on this one? All right, we'll move to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Now, we're number five on part B. This is the enrollment projections, the demographer summary discussion, and Rod has that one as well.
The, uh, the board has asked, uh, before the meeting, the joint meeting on Wednesday, that they would like to see at least a, an idea of what the projections were that the demographer came up with. Uh, we have put together a short presentation to just give the board an idea of where the projections have been, uh, where enrollment has been, and then, uh, where the demographer has said that they're going versus what we have been using internally for our projection models. So, the purpose of this presentation is to share our experience with enrollment projections. If you look at our enrollment, if we go back to seventy-one, seventy-two, we were at twenty-four million dollars, or twenty, twenty-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-seven students. Um, in a twelve, uh, to fourteen-year period of time, we dropped, uh, fifty percent to twelve thousand, three seventeen in eighty-five, eighty-six. And you can see that that's been pretty consistent. Um, we've dropped about a sto, thousand students from that point until ninety-seven, ninety-eight. At that point in time, we were involved in our strategic plans, so we, all right, let me step back. So, in, in ninety-nine, we looked at the, the- So in ninety nine, we looked at the, the overall projections because the board was looking at changing the schools, doing a million dollar construction project. So if you look at that point in time, we showed enrollment of conservative projections going down and the high projections being up in the ten four range going into two thousand nine. The actual, as you can see, it was, came out a little bit beforehand, and you'll see this trend pretty much throughout in all the projections, is we start out a little bit below what the projections are, and then seem to kind of flow into the middle of the projections over time. So it's been a very good demographer projection within these numbers when they projected things back in two thousand, in nineteen ninety nine. As we move forward, this is where we, we're moving toward a strategic plan, so we decided that we would get another demographer report at that point in time. So at that point in time, you can see that the high line and low line, it showed on both cases, us growing to, on the bottom end, growing to two seven, two thousand seventeen to a ten seventeen, or a ten nine fifty seven on the high end. As I mentioned earlier, you can see the drop, and then we kind of fall back into the middle of this projection. The, the demographer did a very, a fair job of, of projecting it, but again, it's, it, it flowed through similarly to what our last projection was. So then we wanted to take a look at with this increase in this area, it was right after our boundaries, so we wanted to see what that effect was there. And again, looking at this is, this is where we are today, or where the projections were today, of a ten six five one versus a ten four thirty three when we came in at a ten So in two thousand twelve, our projections still were showing that it was growing, going off that ten thousand three thirteen, but what happened is enrollment dropped. And so at that point in time, we asked the demographer to say, you know, the trends were going up from two thousand seven, what, what's going on with this big drop off at that period of time? So we told her to sharpen, sharpen up and look at our, why the drop was, and coming in twelve thirteen, we see a new projection of the high and conservative, which you see kind of in the line that we're talking about today of with fourteen fifteen, a ten twenty five on the high end, a ninety nine eighty nine on the low end. So then part of with looking at our budget reductions, looking at what we're going forward, we wanted her to take another look at things, looking into the future at this point in So if we start out with our ten twelve actual for fourteen fifteen, and we look at the, her conservative projection back in thirteen, optimistic in thirteen, what we have been using internally, and then the conservative for in fourteen, and the conservative, or the, the optimistic in fourteen, you see that the projections are showing that they're pretty much in line with what we've been using internally for the next two to three years. But then they're showing a, a big increase for both the years going out. And what it's showing is the eighteen nineteen and going forward, there's a growth in the kindergarten class, and she shows it growing periodically from that time. She will share when she meets with the, the board and the city council, that it's usually demographers' thought process that there will be a birth rate growth in overall. So some of her assumptions are based on that assumption that there will be some growth. So what we're looking at is to kind of clarify this, is maybe just looking at the three lines. So we look at what our current internal projections are, what the conservative projections of the last enrollment study, and on the high end. And based on this, at least at this point in time, until we kind of see the trend go, we feel comfortable using the internal line for our projection. And then as we move forward, as we get into the seventeen eighteen year, if things are trending the way we think they are, and it moves up into this category, we will have some gain, but we still are, are concerned that we might still be on this internal line. But it looks like there is optimism in our overall and our projections that it's not worse than what we thought. I guess that was the big, the biggest point that we were looking at when we were coming up with for right sizing the budget, is we didn't want the demographer to come up with two lines going further south than what we were doing internally. So this is good news, but it's, it's something that I think we need to still let play out because it's, you know, it's, it's assumptions. And as you saw in some of the others, we might be, come right back in line, and we might be in the middle of her two lines, or we might be below her lines. So as I mentioned, I believe from what we'll, will, what I'll do as part of my projection model, that we will have conversations at our next board meeting or study session to discuss the target amount, I'll be using this internal line right here. Questions?
All right, yeah, Tom?
So based on the, the audit report in combination with the demographic report, I know the, the original went back in July, we were being told it's going to be somewhere between four to six million recommended by staff, is that going to be, or from administration? Is that going to be adjusted at all, or are you still planning on that same target?
We're, as we're looking through it, seeing the benefit in the budget, seeing what early stages of what I'm seeing in the, the presentation for next week on the budget adjustments, I think we're looking at more of the four to five range, is what we're looking at, and probably as an overall, probably closer to the four.
Okay, another question, I know you're saying that she's anticipating a larger kindergarten class, and aren't we already experiencing that? Because I was looking at the, the school data site where you can look at all the different levels at every grade, and I was looking at kindergarten, we were at, this year, we had seven hundred and thirty five kids, or no, seven hundred and forty eight kids, and last year we had seven hundred and thirty five graduating seniors, so our replacement in the kindergarten is higher than our graduating seniors, and that's the first time it's been like that for a couple of years.
It, it has been that way, but we have seen, and I think we still have a couple classes coming through, that you have eight hundred class, senior classes or, or classes coming through the system. We were seeing that more on a regular basis, that it was an eight hundred class. Usually the trend is a, you know, high seven hundred class, kindergarten class coming through will be in eight hundred class when it gets to the high school, just with the, some of the adds throughout time, especially from the eighth grade to ninth grade period of time. So it'll be growth throughout, but I, I think that we've seen with kindergarten is a lot of times, is we've seen one year high, next year low. I think this is a trend where, where she's suggesting that we're going to be in that mid seven hundred range for the next three to four years, and then starts showing a growth that in twenty twenty two, it gets up to an eight fifty, I think, I believe are what her projections were.
Okay, all right, we'll have more questions, I'll wait till Wednesday when we have the demographer, but thanks for the sneak peek so we can see these numbers before we have our meeting with the city council and all that, so thanks.
Any other questions? Yeah, Nellie?
Yes, do we know, or do we have a percentage of how many of our kindergarteners who are Bloomington residents are in a different school district?
I could look up that information, I don't know that information.
Would you?
So number of kindergarteners that...
Are Bloomington residents but have gone to a different school district.
Do you want to know also the ones that are coming in from other school districts?
Sure, that would be good, thank you.
Do you have any idea off the top of your head which is higher?
In, in, across the board, there's not a grade that isn't that way.
Okay.
I should mention, the, the presentation will be this, this Wednesday, day after tomorrow, city council and school board over, and city council chambers and Dr. Hazel Reinhardt and Dr. Susan Brower will be presenting these, this information, so. Yeah, Jim?
So there were two, there were two demographers' reports, or did they combine together to work with?
No, there's, there's one demographer's report Dr. Susan Brower is collaborating with, and seeing what her information is, and giving her insight from a state level versus just what we're getting from Hazel is more of a district perspective.
And, and Hazel has been providing information in the past, and she does Hennepin County, I don't know if she works for the county or if she's just an independent that can go to, well, let's look at your district, let's look at this district, and then she, and this is all based on what, births and what, does, does mobility enter into it, you know, the...
It's more of a cohort type of mentality, it's your birth rates and then the cohort from going from one year to the next year, what you've seen as history over time.
You know, and immigration and a whole bunch of other factors that could enter into it too. So would it be okay to challenge some of her assumptions, you know, and how it's, how it's working out? I mean, obviously she has to have some good data in order to present to us so that we can accept, you know, because that's quite a spread between the optimistic and the internal projection that we're, that we're seeing here.
Remembering that you have a financial person in your district that is conservative.
Yeah, which is good. But anyhow, I guess, you know, from a historical perspective, we've seen some of these demographers' reports since the eighties and nineties, and you know, as some of these have shown, there just seems to be some outside factors that enter into it, you know, it'd be great if people coming in, stay in Bloomington, go to school in Bloomington and do all those types of things, but it doesn't happen. So the fluctuation that enters into this is sometimes two to three year trends, and so it's just, it's just curious to, to see what's coming up.
I'm sure Hazel's watching this tonight, so her pencil is...
In anticipation of Wednesday.
She's ready to go, she knows that you want to challenge your assumptions, so she'll meet you at the door at...
You're right.
Six fifteen.
And that's why it's, it'll be good that to have two demographers there.
Because this is going to be good, because I'm sure the city is also definitely concerned about what might be their housing and some of the business aspects of what a demographer's report would be.
I'm sure they too are all tuned in this evening, watching.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thanks very much, Rod. Let's see, next up is number six on the part B is the approval of the guiding change document for right sizing the budget, and Rod is our featured presenter this evening, who would like to read this? Tom?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District two seventy one approves the guiding change document for right sizing the budget.
Second.
All right, Tom got that one, just in time. All right, Rod, what have you got?
The board and administration worked on this over the last two study sessions, came up with a final draft that I believe the board is looking at to approve tonight. Again, this guiding change document helps both board and administration as we move down the process of right sizing the budget. It's kind of the first step mainly of saying, explaining to people why we're reducing the budget. On the other column is the results, what we expect the results to be after we make these changes, and then the middle column being the unacceptable, the things the board wants administration to stay away from as part of the process of coming up with a list for the board.
All right, this, this looks like a pretty good summary of our past conversations, anyone have any comments on this? Does it, looks like it accurately reflects what we had discussed. All right, any questions, comments before we move to vote? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. Now, we're on number seven of part B, which is the approval of the strategic plan refresh. And who would like to read this one?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Nellie?
Take a deep breath first.
Take a drink of water, too.
It's a long one. Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District two seventy one approves a refreshing of district's strategic plan vision and strategic directions. The refreshed vision will read, "The vision of Bloomington Public Schools is to create pathways to graduation for all learners, to prepare them for the next level of study, to graduate and to enter college or a career with the necessary skills to be successful. Each learner will have a personalized growth plan that prepares them to meet the following milestones: preschool ready, ready for kindergarten, ready, reading by third grade, middle school ready, high school ready, college and career ready." The refreshed strategic directions will read, "Maximize student growth and close the achievement gap by delivering instruction, educational programs designed to help learners meet or exceed pathways to graduation milestones. Establishing a comprehensive system of learning supports to help learners overcome barriers to learning. Ensuring management and governance focuses resources, staff and programs to sustain the district's strategic directions." Second.
All right, very good, that was a long one. And superintendent has this one.
Yes, thank you. I'll read the background information that's attached to the, to this resolution. At the December first, two thousand fourteen Pathways to Graduation Public Meeting, administration presented the district's Pathways to Graduation Vision. Administration also presented strategic directions and plans designed to bring to life this Pathways to Graduation Vision. Administration recommends that the School Board approve refreshing the strategic plan with the Pathways to Graduation Vision and related strategic directions.
All right, questions, comments on this? Tom?
I have a question, I guess a historical, what do you call it, historical perspective question, is it typical that the, the vision and, and strategic plan is changed like this without, because it seems like this is a, kind of came out of nowhere, it wasn't much, there wasn't any conversation, wasn't brought to a study session, we didn't have any input or conversation about this, so this kind of came as a surprise, so is that typical of how it's changed?
The last time we did a strategic planning process was back in two thousand six, two thousand seven, and at that time, there was a lengthy process done to that, and we feel that the strategic plan is still valid. However, because of all our Pathways to Graduation work, we think it's timely that we bring a refreshing of the strategic plan to align everything to the, to our vision and to our new strategic directions, because that's driving all our planning work, and it's been brought up with stakeholders meetings, it's been brought up time and again with the board about the direction we're going in, and all the infographics that are all over, all over the district. And we constantly refer to this thing in all our meetings such as with PTSA council and other meetings. So I don't think this is just a refreshing of the plan based upon how things have evolved over the past probably three years.
Okay, yeah, it was just a question, like, you know, I agree with all these changes, but it just seems that we didn't really have a conversation as a board about changing the strategic plan, until I saw this resolution, I'm kind of thinking, well, isn't this like skipping a step? I mean, isn't it something typically that would come to in the study session, and we'd say we want to change, that we want to update it, and we want to have, you know, conversation surrounding it, and I don't think we... know, conversation surrounding it? And I don't think we did that process.
Well, we've never done a refreshing before. This is the first time we're doing a refreshing of this plan. But it's all in line with all the conversations we've been having with the Board over a period of time about this Pathways to Graduation visit, vision, and strategic directions.
Okay. And also, next one question is just reading this, as Nellie was reading, I noticed that you got Management here, it's all in caps, but then Governance is in lowercase. I'm wondering why that is.
The reason for that is because it refers back to the three-component framework, Management, Instruction, and Learning Supports. So that's what we focus on.
Okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you for clarifying. I was kind of feeling, you know, in superiority complex there.
Insignificant.
No slight intended.
Yeah, I just have to comment on this one as well, because I think as I read it, it looks good. I mean, it really is reflecting, like you said, everything we have been talking about and all this about pathways to graduation, all the expectation that the legislation is, you know, has and asks right now for us. But I also have to say, you know, that it was a little bit surprising for me too. I knew that that was coming, because we have talked about that before. We agree on the need that we had on focusing again in the vision and refreshing that, the vision and the strategic direction. But it would have been good as a Board to have that conversation together. At least one day, we would have had the study session. Because I don't know if maybe something else would have come out of it. I mean, we're talking about the strategic plan and maybe some other things would have come up in a conversation or reinforced, you know, kind of more like the feeling that the Board had in regards of refreshing the strategic plan. So that's all I have to say.
Jim, did you hear?
Yeah, I had a question too, because that, it came up to mind, because we've worked on the strategic plan for a while, the particular strategic directions that we've had in the vision cards, the matrix, and all of those measurements, as we've seen from Dave Heistad, you know, some new measurements on how we're going to measure the milestones and what we need to do. And then I said, well, that's good, because the strategic directions then that we have for those other ones, how do they fit into these three components? You know, the funding base and maximizing of our resources, you know, falls under that ensuring that management focuses resources. So all of those six, five categories and strategic directions fall into these definitions, so that we're just really changing some of the wording around. And so then, as I went through it and saw some of the other things like that, talked to the Superintendent and talked to Chris, the Assistant Superintendent, you know, felt comfortable with that. But the point is, while taking that, we probably should have had a study session or something like that, just to show the revision or how those are all included in this, so it isn't just a drastic change from that.
All right. Any other comments, questions?
I'm sorry, so I guess the question is, should we have an additional mini-session or study session on the refreshing aspect? Or if we vote on this tonight, is that adopting it?
Well, voting... Voting on it would be adopting this language, but we can always come back and have another conversation and amend.
Or additional discussion now.
Do several things. One would be to, just like you said, are you going to table? Go to a study session, bring it back some other day.
Tom?
Is this time-sensitive in any way? I mean, is this something that has to be done in a certain amount of time, or is this something that we could come back after a study session we have, like maybe in January, and come back and vote on this?
It's not time-sensitive.
Okay. So then I'll go ahead and make the motion to table until after we can have a study session to talk about it.
Second.
Okay. Do we want to put a more definite date on that?
I would say no, because I don't want to pressure to, when we're going to have the study session, I know our calendar's pretty full, so I think it's whenever we can put a study session in.
All right. All right, so we have moved and seconded. Without a date, we move to vote. So we'll go for a roll call on this one, and I'll just start with Don. What do you say? You want to... Are you in favor of this table? Motion to table?
Yes, aye.
All right, Jim?
Aye.
Marine? Aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll table this until we've had a study session scheduled, then we can have some conversation around it. Does that reflect our wants? All right. I had one item I wanted to talk about on here, but I'll grab you in the hallway afterwards. Sorry about that, Jim, I had to get my notes in there. Last thing up here is the, I'm sorry, the second to the last thing up here is the policy review, second reading revised policy for 30 student teachers. Who'd like to read this one?
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the second reading of revised policy for 30 student teachers.
Second.
All right. Tim Anderson, Executive Director of Learning and Teaching, is up here for this particular resolution. What do you have for us?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, members of the Board, Cabinet, and community. Policy 430 updated, as we periodically do in our policy reviews. Some key points of the update include updated language reflecting department restructure. So currently reflecting better the current department name. Another update is because institutions have different time expectations regarding student teaching length, and because we anticipate possible changes to how teachers are trained, we remove specific language about the length of time for particular student teaching placements. Third, Section L has been changed to update practices around background processing fees. And in addition, we endeavor to help staff complete our online professional learning course, both for liability purposes, but also to give our staff access to that professional learning, so they're best situated to have a successful hosting experience. They can have peace of mind knowing that they're updated, their practice and liability is taken care of. So those are key tenets of the update.
All right. Any questions, comments? This is the second reading. All right, you did a fabulous job explaining this, so... All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Dr. Anderson.
Thank you.
And the last one on here, Part B, is the Superintendent contract. Would like, Tom, go ahead.
Be resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves a three-year contract effective July 1st, 2015, through July 30th, I'm sorry, through June 30th, 2018, with Les Fujitaki as Superintendent of Bloomington Public Schools, under the terms and conditions agreed to and set forth in the Superintendent's contract attached here too. The School Board authorizes and directs the Chair and Clerk of the Board of Education to sign the new contract.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. I would like to just quickly say thank you to Tom and Marine for accepting the nomination to work on this particular contract. Have we had a, everybody had a chance to read this over? We have any questions, comments on this one? This is for, yeah, Rick?
I just wanted to note two things. One is that I find it very admirable of the Superintendent to not ask for an increase in the salary this year, especially in the climate of us looking for budget cuts. So I just wanted to point that out to the public. And then also, had a conversation where I said we need to question the judgment of anyone who would willingly move from Hawaii to Minnesota, especially looking at this week's forecast. But in my experience with the Superintendent, I found that he seems, appears to be of sound mind in doing so. And so I will, I believe I'll vote in favor of this current contract.
So that's the psychological...
That was my psychological evaluation. It was close.
Okay, Tom?
Just a quick clarification, wasn't, he didn't not ask for a raise, he refused any kind of rates. So we tried, but...
And this makes four years in a row. The whole last concert, one more.
Jim?
That was a good point. So this is the fourth year of salary remaining the same. However, the Board reviews annually, and with our new evaluation that we're going to be working on in January, we will be evaluating, and the Board retains the right to modify the annual salary on an annual basis after the review, you know, provided the adjustments don't go any lower. So just to bring that into the picture too, because when we go through the evaluations and then renew each year with whatever adjustment might be there or not.
All right. Isn't this fun talking about you, Les? We can drag this on forever. All right, any other?
I'll support it also.
Any other comments? All right, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
Thank you very much.
All right, now we move into Board Member Reports. This is an opportunity for each Board Member to share what they've been up to, since our last meeting could be certainly committee assignments, but if you've been to different items throughout the district, feel free to share. Anyone who wants to go first? Otherwise, I'll... Jim?
I will. This is the time of the year for, it's a month full of sports, concerts at all schools, and various performances by all our students. So it's one of the more opportune times to go out and visit the schools and see what's going on at all of them. At, I was at Kennedy Parent Engagement and the First Annual Men's Breakfast last Saturday, and we had a former NFL professional from the Denver Broncos speak to us. He was quite an inspirational speaker, and he talked about the trials and tribulations and triumphs of his young years leading up to him. Now he's a motivational speaker and master of virginity program at a local church in Minneapolis. And he came in with radius guests, you know, the family engagement person at Kennedy, they provided some strategies for some staff and for some parents and even some students that were there for it. And I, it was a resounding success from everybody that participated in it. So it's just another opportunity that we've had, and Kennedy is really stepping up its effort in trying to get as many male role models as they possibly can. A second one was the fact that Valley View Elementary School held a, went to Wonderland last Friday, and it was a student activity from five to eight that cost $3, $5, and they had pizza, chips, cookies, and juice. And every child that was there, they had 83 children show up as an open gym, open activity, and they said it was such a great success that they wanted to make sure that all of the staff and everybody, the volunteers that were there were highlighted. Each child was given a ticket for dinner, and they didn't have to be, so some of the siblings could come too. So it was a parent drop-off where it was just all kids. So all the staff, and they had snowflake making, and they were making tie blankets and various crafts, and playing in the gym and everything else like that. It was so successful, the parents called up and told them what a wonderful idea it was, and could we do this again in the spring? So when you ever have a repeat performance, it's always a good sign. I just wanted to call attention to the fact that we've, that the school district has taken the Cabinet and Administration on the road. Our Bloomington Optimists Club, that meets every Wednesday morning from 7:30 to 8:30 with a brief business meeting, and then we have a speaker presented. And so I was able to get virtually all of the Cabinet members to come on a different Wednesday, except Human Resources and the Director of Learning. So I guess I'm going to have to include that in there too, just to come and speak to this group of 15, 30 people who are the optimists, naturally are one of our friends, and they're supporters of youth. But they came and they talked about the aspects of the schools, and they were well-received. In fact, just this last time, we even had John Weiser, the technology, come. Unfortunately, he had complications getting his stuff set up, because the La Quinta Hotel did not have power to the room we were using. So everybody was kind of, oh, gee, great technology thing, what's going on here? So then we were able to get it straightened out, and he went out with his presentation. But our Superintendent has gone out too, and he's taken our show on the road, and he talked to Men's Club at Transfigurational Church, talked about all the wonderful things that... So it's just another opportunity of their participating in the community and doing, presenting how well Bloomington schools are doing. I think that's about it. So good work, everybody.
All right, anyone? You know, Rick?
I attended the Bloomington United for Youth meeting last week. At that meeting, they are looking for more participation from all students, but especially more representation from Kennedy High School students. They're looking for volunteers for the next Box City vigil. They haven't finalized the date yet, but they need a representative from Kennedy to help recruit students at that site. They're also looking for help with their job fair. They also talked about Central Grounds. The idea of Central Grounds, I learned, came up in the 1970s, and they've had several different incarnations. And so some of the questions they're asking, is it still something that the youth of Bloomington need, is a meeting place specifically geared towards youth or not? So they're wondering, are we still relevant? If we are relevant, in what fashion? So they're considering some sort of a youth forum, wondering, should they partner with a business, partner with the school district, or try to do it on their own? So those are some of the questions that came up at the meeting. Also, they mentioned that they have already started recruiting for BECTV. They need as many volunteers as they can get, and they recruit as early as seventh grade. So if you have any up-and-coming movie producers that would like some camera exposure, I don't know what exactly the seventh graders do, but they need help. So anyone that would like to participate, you go to beectv.org, I believe, and there'll be contact information for that particular opportunity. Also, the Bloomingtonyouth.org is the website for Bloomington United for Youth. Now, I unfortunately had to miss our Pathways Advisory Committee meeting last week, because we had our own meeting. But if Dr. Anderson is here, I didn't ask him if he'd have an update, but if he wouldn't mind saying a few words about the meeting? It was really great. Sorry to put you on the spot, but anyhow, you're always pretty good at this.
Been there before, so thanks. We met directly after the annual public meeting for the Pathways Advisory Committee public meeting hearing. And we had a chance to reconvene and gather feedback from the group about the annual public meeting. So I have that collated, and we'll be processing through that. In general, I think members understood what we were going over, and it was well-received. And then we flowed right into our regular agenda item set, and were able to accomplish our normal December workflow. One of the things on the agenda included Visitor Gary Cresson's review of the Career Academy, and members were very interested in the development of that program, asked a number of questions. In fact, co-chairs were worried we were going to go over time, so we expedited the last few questions and gave people a chance to write anything down. So a member said lots of distinct interest in that. So we'll pick up where we left off at our next meeting, and I think that's our report.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Anyone else? Don?
Just a couple things. I had a chance to attend the update on our technology at Valley View Middle School. which is really great. They had a panel there to speak so that other teachers in the district could come in and learn about the rollout of the Chromebooks and how that process has gone. And then we got to visit classrooms and I was so impressed with some of the things the students were doing. And the, the one that I really enjoyed was two young men showed me their trailer that they had made in lieu of what would, in my day, would have been a written book report. They made this whole online trailer like a movie that was about their book. And I thought, wow, this looks just like what I might see on a TV when you're looking at a commercial for a movie. So it was just excellent quality. I also had a chance to listen to the sixth grade band a little bit in the performance right before our meeting tonight. And I also attended the MSBA Delegate Assembly Friday and Saturday over the weekend and I just, there was a presentation there Friday night that was kind of interesting related to, to all of us here. There, it was a researcher and the person's name was Dara Zehandlhar, if I have that correctly. But the, the research that they were looking at, and I can let all the board members if they want to look at this, was things like, do scoreboard members have what they called capacity? And then do districts with higher capacity board members beat the odds and excel academically? And they were looking at the research for the relationship between academic excellence, I guess you could say, and school boards that excel. So I thought was interesting speaker. So thank you. That's it.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say that at this MSBA Delegate Assembly, there was discussion about the land trust that Governor Dayton has been legislated to appoint an overseer for the land trust. And yet he has refused to do so or just put it out or I don't know what he's, what his reasoning is. And so the MSBA is recommending that each district has a resolution telling Governor Dayton to please do his duty and follow the law and appoint this person to the land trust to oversee the land trust. So I have brought the copy of the resolution to the Deb and we will vote on it at our first meeting in January. It's money that comes back to the students and it's land up north that was deeded. It's very interesting, the whole story about it. But anyway, just thought I'd mention that, that it will be coming to us in January and that it's something every school board in the state has been asked to, you know, so that we can say to the governor, every school board in the state is looking for.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Tom, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted a quick thank you to the PTSA Council who last week had their first ever, and hopefully it'll be an annual occurrence of the, at a legislative town hall. And we were fortunate enough to have four of our legislators join us. Senator Franzin was out of town, couldn't be here. But it's always a pleasure to have our legislators in, in the board room and I brought my mother to the, to the event. She's been living in Minnesota for four months, so she can kind of see what's going on in the state of Minnesota with education and she was quite impressed and liked the, really liked all the, the post-secondary education options that were discussed. And, you know, as a Bloomington resident and as a parent that has kids in school, I think that I, you know, I'm extremely fortunate with the five legislators we have, that they are so supportive of public education and they're all advocates of public education. So just wanted to thank them as well for their, all their hard work and their advocacy for, for public education.
It's nice to see you had mom in the front row.
Well, yeah.
Yes, I also wanted to say thank you to the PTSA Council for hosting the forum and to our legislators. It's great to have State Representative Ann Lucheski and Linda Slocum and Paul Rosenthal and Senator Melissa Wicklund attending. And then Friday morning, I attended the AMSD where the conversation kind of was around affected legislative communication and how to build relationship with our legislators. And one of the speakers was Alice Segren, who was a, is a former school board member for Bloomington as well as a former state representative. So they also talked about the platform, the legislative platform. And I will invite you to visit their website so that you can have a better idea of what is, what's happening right now, what, what's in the platform right now for AMSD. And that is all.
All right, thank you. Right. I was also present at the Valley View Middle School on Next Technologies Update. And you're right, that was, it was a lot of fun to, to hear the panel. There was a couple of students that were on there that talked about what they thought of their Chromebooks and how they use them and some teachers that gave some feedback. There was also teachers and staff from the high schools that were curious and asking questions because high schools will be getting their Chromebooks soon and they wanted to know how this worked and what happened there and how did this work? And then also visiting the, the classrooms, the individual classrooms, want to say thank you to the teachers that let us come into their classrooms right in the middle of their, of their presentations. And it was very interesting to see all the students interacting with their Chromebooks and how they use them in different ways. I always wondered why they call it a trailer if it happened before the, the movie, but.
Before the movie.
Yeah. Also had, Intermediate 917 had a board meeting on Tuesday, December 2nd. We had, I'll just quickly go over the agenda. We had, in addition to our Good News Report, we had a Intermediate 917 employee and teacher of the fall quarter. And that's something that they do there and they'll, they'll, it's not hard to find somebody who's doing a wonderful job and to highlight them and to bring them forward and to, and to share in their successes. And that particular teacher's name is Melissa Scheller. I believe I'm pronouncing it right. We also had an overview of the SUN program. And the SUN, of course, is an acronym for Students With Unusual Needs. And it was very interesting to see the three present, presenters talk about just some of the specific things that happen on a, on a daily or a weekly basis in, in some of the programs over there. They're quite a bit different than what you might see in, in our, our classrooms. So, you know, I give kudos and credit to every teacher in, in every schoolroom, but the teachers that handle our Students With Unusual Needs deserve an extra special nod, so. Also want to say thanks for the PTSA for hosting the town, town hall meeting. And Nellie mentioned the names, Ann Lucheski, Linda Slocum, Paul Rosenthal, those are our representatives. And Senator Melissa Halverson-Wicklund was there. It was really interesting to see and listen to their, to their answers, to listen to some of the questions that were presented. Also want to take an opportunity to say thank you to my coworkers for a, a great year. We did a lot of things this year. We, we managed to, to get through quite a few policies. First and second readings, updating, doing some punctuating, crossing Ts, dotting Is. A lot of information to, to digest for three brand-new board members. Along with all the other work that we've accomplished this year. Also want to say thank you to superintendent and the administration for being part of the team. It means a lot to me and I know it means a lot to the board. So I hope I don't speak out of turn when I speak for the board and say that. That's, that's all I have. Rick?
I just wanted, one thing is that with all the acronyms, I know sometimes we forget what they are, but SUN is Students With Unique Needs, not unusual. But I know that you know that because you actually told me that.
There you go.
But just wanted to make sure that everyone at home watching knows that we actually do know.
Some did.
And I was just.
I think it might vary, but you're right. Yes, Don?
I just, I just wanted to make one more comment since you brought up the SUN program. I have heard some feedback that a parent was singing the praises of how wonderful that program is already and how happy they are to have a student there. So I think that's an important piece that also we have parents that are really appreciating the work that went into that program and the teachers and the, just the whole special ed department and, and putting that together because that's a pretty unique program in itself.
I concur.
I just, I just had one more, one more question too. Some of you may have heard or read recently in a paper about TIES. You know, one of our consortium that we belong to is, is having some, some extra auditing. And as the representative from TIES, when I went to the annual meeting recently, they did talk about the previous executive director retiring and a new interim director named. But, so there has been some concern about financial misdealings and it's unfortunate as a representative to the TIES, you know, and each of the districts that are part owners of TIES, you know, has a stake in it. And so to have a, an audit, special audit come about, you know, raises some concern about how some of these boards are managed. So we'll be finding more and more out about this as it goes along, but the fact that there already were two articles in the paper about some kind of investigation and audit is naturally alarming. And so we're keeping abreast of what's going on.
All right. Now we get to superintendent's report.
Right, thank you. I'll cover the upcoming board sessions in chronological order. First, for your information, we're going to have a joint School Board, City Council session this Wednesday, December 10th at 7:00 PM at the City Council Chamber. It's going to be two topics. One will be the enrollment projection report done by a demographer. And the second will be a report from the state demographer on demographic trends, not just in the state, but also the city. The next is again for information on, there's a study session scheduled for December 15th. And topics include the mid-year budget adjustments and rightsizing the budget process. That will start at 7:00 PM. The next is I need a motion to establish a closed session to follow the December 15th study session and that's for the purpose of negotiations, discussions.
So move.
Back to second.
All right, all those in favor of a closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
December 22nd meeting has been canceled. Now, the next session that I need a motion for will be an organizational study session for January 5th, 2015. And that's to start at 7:00 PM and that's to discuss organizational matters for 2015 for the board.
Tom, move. Second.
All right, moved in second.
Question?
Yes.
Is it, being through this once already, I thought it was kind of odd how we had the organizational meeting before the organizational meeting where we kind of discuss how we're going to vote and we vote, then we come back next week and then we vote again. And I'm wondering, is that typically what's always been done in this district? Is that how other districts do it? Is it necessary to have two meetings where we're doing the same votes?
Yes.
Okay, well, it's a short answer. A reason?
Well, because we discuss all the committee assignments and, you know, that, that doesn't even happen in a meeting, you know what I mean? In a real meeting? Because we, we do a lot of discussing back and forth and the horse trading and. Well, you be, you be on this committee, I'll be on that committee, you know, like, oh, I'll, I'll give up my, you know, I'll put down my choices and I'll give up my third choice so you could have your first choice and you'll give up something else, you know.
Yeah, that first meeting is just very informal.
Yeah.
And then after that, when we have that official meeting, we just go directly to point.
Conversation in a meeting we can.
But nothing's binding from the first meeting.
That's another reason why I don't think it's necessary because we do like the straw poll of like, we're going to vote for the chair, but then we come back next, because we can't vote in it. We come back next weekend and we vote for chair. It's like, well, why don't we skip that process?
The thing is that that gives us the opportunity to, to really talk and it takes some time that it's not really.
I think we could do that in one meeting is kind of my, my.
Is that, the first one?
I do, I do have to say that, you know, I understand the committee discussion and discuss which committees we want, but we also got a list prior to it, so we had already all filled that out too. But I have to say, I, I did find it really strange that we did that, like, straw or whatever, the pretend vote because you can't really vote on who would be all the off, you know, the chair, et cetera, and then, and then voted the next week. And I, I did wonder, is that what all school boards do or what? Because I thought that was the, the other discussion wasn't so much, but the actual officer part was, I just thought was a little strange. Most places I've ever been, you nominate them and you vote them that night and you don't have, you know, you don't have a, a vote to see whether votes are going to fall the week before. So that's why I was just a little surprised on that piece of it too.
Well, my opinion is we, it's a regular meeting also, so there will be business to carry on. And if we take an hour and a half, which is about what we usually take, you know, just carrying, just working on organizational stuff, then we've got another hour and a half of meeting and that doesn't fly.
The, the, the first board meeting has a very long agenda. There's a lot of things that need to be voted on. And so we're, I think my opinion of the organizational meeting is that it's, it's saving room for time and discussion. Yeah.
But don't other school districts have that organizational meeting as a separate meeting where they do all the committee assignments and then do the elections? And then the next week they have the actual board meeting? They don't put the organizational and the actual business board meeting together? They're two separate meetings. Isn't that how it's done? Was that's how it's explained to us, we had MSBA training, that the first, the first meeting in January, as they call it, is when you vote for your, your chairs and your committee assignments. And then you go on to your, your regular board meetings the next week, where we kind of have the pre-organizational meeting. We come and we do all this. And then the next meeting, we have another organizational meeting and then put a business meeting at the end of it. And we could just have the organizational meeting first, first Monday in January, and the next meeting have a regular board meeting.
Well, the thing is that it would make it complicated if there are new members, new board members. That's true. Exactly. We don't have them this year, this coming year, but like this one, we did have you as new board member. So if you go directly to the organizational meeting, then you won't have that, you know what I mean?
Well, I'm just.
Versus gotta be the, the.
Does anyone know about a school district doing this?
Does it matter? This is what works for us.
Well, I'm, well, I'm.
I can't say.
It doesn't work.
I can't say for sure that it.
It's unnecessary.
Yeah, I, I can't say for sure that other board, board, boards do it this particular way.
I do too.
Some outs, some outstaters for districts in greater Minnesota that we have to try and eliminate that term outstate versus in-state, you know, what does that mean? Anyhow, but there have been people that have been curious about that and they say, well, why don't you have it at your regular board meeting? Because we'd like to hear all the discussion and the potential, you know, speeches by everybody when they want to go in for an office. And, and so some people have said that and others say, you know, it's just, all you're doing is just saying what, what you did at your workshop and just clarifying and going on from there. So it looks like you've already established it. We said, yeah, we have. But it's just a matter of formality that we have to do at a regular board meeting.
And this organizational meeting is on camera?
Right.
So you're both there, yeah?
Yeah. I mean, we could technically schedule the first meeting, that organizational meeting, as a regular meeting and vote at it. But, I mean, I see what you're saying. It, it makes sense because I think last time things changed between the first and second one too.
But our policy is that the first, we meet the second, third and fourth Mondays of the month. This is the first Monday of the month.
Right.
So technically, we have to change.
It'd be a big pain in the butt. I mean, but we, we technically could, you know, we could do it if we so choose, so chose to do so. But, yeah, I, if my memory serves me correctly, things did change between the first, between that organizational study session and when we voted. Because there could be, you know, hey, wait a second, maybe I can't do that committee or I got too many or whatever, so.
I, I would, I would say, I would defer to the more experienced in the room and say, if it's worked so far, I'm willing to try it again.
I, I just, I like the time that it gives us, time for conversation, time for reflection. As you said, you know, some people changed, you know, maybe I want a different committee or that kind of thing. I know it seems a bit redundant. I felt the same when I came on the board. But the, the first meeting, that second Monday of January will be a very long, busy meeting. And, and I would hate to have it feel like it was compressed because we, we added more conversation to the front of the, what would have to be on the front of it, so. Okay. So we, I, we've, we've shared.
Well, there's a motion on the table.
Yes, and, and the motion is to. Yes, and, and the motion is to put that January 5th meeting in play. All right. So we have a, a motion? Do we have a second on it? All right. All those in favor of the January 5th organizational meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Oh, is that what we were in?
All right.
Did we technically need to roll call it, or?
Yes, you should, because voice voting is also necessarily, although we all know Tom voted against it.
Just saying.
All right, we can, we can go around the horn, and this time we'll start with Rick. So this, this is a, a roll call vote for the organizational meeting on January 5th, so that we know. So Rick, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Just gotta get out all the ayes.
It didn't change. Okay.
Just point of clarification, is it a organizational meeting or is it an organizational study session?
Study session.
Study session.
Does that need to be in the, there's a difference.
Okay, study session. All right.
Yeah, good point.
All right, so the last thing we're looking for is the, we're into the other column of this particular agenda? Does anyone have anything else that they'd like to add in the other column?
Yeah.
Superintendent, it looks like you've got...
I just got handed off the press. ...here, and the Minnesota School Board Association Awards Program includes recognition of board members for completing MSBA, NSBA-sponsored activities. The following awards were presented to three of our school board members at the MSBA Conference on January 15th, 2015. Maureen Balalana, 2014-15 President's Award for completing three hundred or more hours of attendance slash activities.
Wow.
Dick Burkstrom and Nellie Corman, 2014-15 Directors Award for completing one hundred or more hours of attendance slash activities. Congratulations to you all.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're down to the adjournment, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Tom, move. Second.
All right, we'll call this meeting over.